Thank you all for being here with us today. We appreciate you coming. Before we get started, we have Brother Dean Federico with us from San Springs. If you would please, he'll lead us in our invocation and Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Good morning. The word shalom in the Hebrew is a very deep word. It means more than peace. It means wellness. It means soundness of body, prosperity, all kinds of things having to do with wholeness. And when the exiles were taken from Jerusalem to Babylon, their rather irritating prophet told them this. He said that God had told him, pursue the well-being of the city I have deported you to. Pray to the Lord on its behalf, for when it thrives, you will thrive. And that's that word, that word for thrive and well-being, that's that word, shalom. So, Lord, we are this morning focusing on causing this city to thrive, to have all the well-being possible, and to have this county a place of prosperity and peace. So, Lord, we pursue it this morning. We ask you to give us help in that. And we know, according to this verse, that it's your desire to cause this place to prosper. So, we deliver all of our decisions and our hearts this morning to you, to guide us, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world of righteousness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Federico, thank you. Well, again, good morning and welcome. The time is 9:04. We do have a forum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioners Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
There are no court announcements to make at this time, so we'll move to item number one, which is consider and take action on minutes of previously held meetings of Commissioners Court on September 30th, 2025. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments? I do have one that I addressed prior to court under the public comments, going to amend it to say concerning not having issue of use of FM 1667. The additional information in there that we have here is not pertinent, striking the cutoff. If you look on the second page, first page, I'm sorry. I had discussions prior to with Mary Margaret concerning this. Any other additions? If not, entertain a motion on the amended, excuse me, entertain a motion on the amended minutes.
I'd like to make the motion that the minutes as amended of previously held Committees Court count on September 30th, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioners Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the minutes of September 30th, 2025 as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present. Item number two is consider and take action to proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week here in Henderson County. And where are you at, Mr. Spencer? Please, come forward.
Good morning. I plan on having a few kids here this morning, but they all had prior engagements. I think regional, cross-country and everything fell on today. But Judges and Commissioners, today I'm proud to recognize Henderson County 4-H during National 4-H Week. The Texas 4-H Youth Development Program has a long history of helping young people learn, grow, and lead through hands-on experiences in agriculture, natural resources, family and community health, STEM, and citizenship. Here in Henderson County, 4-H is making a real impact. This past year, we had 385 youth who are active members in 4-H clubs, supported by 92 dedicated volunteers. Through outreach efforts in our schools and communities, nearly 1,900 additional young people were reached with 4-H learning opportunities. Our youth are engaged in projects ranging from shooting sports, livestock, and food and nutrition to robotics and leadership. They are developing skills that prepare them for future careers, but more importantly, they are learning responsibility, citizenship, and service. Programs such as Hatching in the Classroom, Path to Plate, Barn Tours, and School Gardens reached over 2,500 students across the county this past year. These experiences bring agriculture and science to life in a way that textbooks alone cannot. We are grateful for volunteers, schools, and community partners who make this possible, and for the continued support of this court. Henderson County 4-H is building the next generation of leaders, and we thank you for recognizing and celebrating our youth during National 4-H Week. Thank y'all for y'all's support.
Court, comments, discussion?
Commissioner Richardson, I attended a 4-H banquet a couple months ago, and Henderson County has a very strong 4-H program. And I'd just like to thank the families and the volunteers and the youth for this, to keep it going strong.
I want to say thank you to all our agents, all our volunteers that helped y'all along the path throughout the years. We couldn't do it without them.
Definitely. Those volunteers and the community.
Henderson County 4-H has always been representative, has a strong 4-H, had lots of representation, lots of kids involved in it. And we're just proud of the things y'all do in the county.
Thank you. Without the family and the volunteers and community of this county, it's between two agents right now. It's, I mean, without them, this organization couldn't go on. I mean, it could go on, but it would be as strong as what it is today.
You may, you may have mentioned, how many different programs are there that 4-H, probably, I'm trying to, I'm all out of words today. The specific areas, you got livestock, you got horses, you've got shooting sports, you've got robotics, you've got, so, what are some of those for those that don't know exactly what 4-H?
You know, everybody thinks 4-H is livestock and animals. We have a robotics program which teaches STEM, and then we have our food and technology, I mean, the food programs. I'm trying to go through. I've got all my numbers from this past year, which, you know, I've recently inherited all these. But we have Learn, Grow, Eat, Go. We have fashion and interior design, food and nutrition. We also have, of course, your beef cattle. We also have dog care and training programs, dairy cattle, meat goats, dairy goats, Path to Plate, horse, meat science, poultry, rabbits, sheep, swine, veterinary science, gardening, horticulture, health and personal safety, aquatic science. We have forestry programs, outdoor education. We also have our shooting sports. It's one of our largest growing groups here in the county. Sport fishing, wildlife and fisheries, citizenship, Clover Kids Projects, community service, entrepreneurship, global citizenship. And I believe that is just a few, health and personal safety, entomology. So, that's just a few of the many programs that we have here in the county.
Two agents.
Two agents, yes, sir.
Plus that from the volunteers.
Yes. So, like I said, we had a little over 385. I think previous year, we had 350. So, we're continuing to grow. I know we have a lot of, the shooting sports especially, we have a lot, we were, we have one of the shooting sports clubs here in the county and surrounding counties. So, we have a lot of kids from surrounding counties that are coming over, transferring to our county. So, I know the last couple of weeks, we had at least 10. So.
As Commissioner said, it is a testimony to the volunteers.
Definitely.
As much as anything.
They take a lot of weight off our shoulders, the agents' shoulders. And, you know, without them, we couldn't, I mean, we could, we could continue, but not strive as much as we do here in the county without their support.
Court, anything further?
Other than, like I say, we've got two, two agents, and we've got room for another. We had, we had three. We lost one. And I don't know, I think we need to get with legislation until we put more money in 4-H. I think they cut budgets. And the only way we can get an agent if one wants to transfer, they're not hiring any outside agents right now. So, we built them a brand-new building, getting ready to move into it. And so, all the 4-H stuff and everything will be at the fairgrounds within a month, we hope. And so, people will have to go to the third floor to see the county agents and the 4-H department.
You going to tell them our visitor last week?
Yes, we had Dr. Avery from Texas A&amp;M. He is the head boss. He came down last Thursday. We didn't have time, he didn't have time to run out to the new building to look at everything, but he'd come and address some of our concerns and everything. So, it was, it was a great little visit that we had. Short visit, but it was great. We have his support, and hopefully we can get some things, and the wheels turning, to get us another agent.
We try. All right. Court, anything further on this? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week here in Henderson County. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously by those present. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three is consider and take action to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County. And with us this morning, we've got quite a few in the back. We've got Ms. Della Cooper with us, and also, I want to point out, Ms. Leslie Saunders in the background. Ms. Cooper is with Breaking Chains here in the county, and of course, Ms. Saunders and her group with the Help Center. We appreciate y'all all being here today.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come and to speak and to request that October be named Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I do want to thank everybody that came. We have the Family Peace Project, Help Center, Crime Victims Unit, Breaking Chains. And I always say this, but I will never stop saying this, is that I love our county. Our county is a great county. We work together, and we have the mission, the mission for survivors, to make them toward their whole and their complete, and they can withstand, and they continue, and they find the new life that they need. I do want to say just really quickly that in our first year, from August 24 to September 25, we have been able to provide 81 survivors here in Henderson County with 215 services that we provided for them. So, we are blessed for our county, and we appreciate our county. We appreciate all the support as we broke, and we have Breaking Chains. In recognition of the important work of domestic violence programs, the victim service providers and their survivors, we urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Breaking Chains and other community organizations in the endeavor of eliminating domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence is not confined to any one group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal boundaries, is sustained by, is sustained by indifference, and has wide-ranging effects on individuals and society as a whole. And whereas the crimes of domestic violence violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas more than 12 million women and men are victims of rape, physical violence, indoor stalking by an intimate partner in the United States every year, averaging 24 people per minute. And whereas one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced contact sexual violence, physical violence, indoor stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And 40% of Texas women and 34.9 of Texas men experience intimate partner violence. And whereas 30% of children exposed to intimate partner violence had their first exposure before the age of two. And an additional 26% has had their first exposure between the ages of two and seven. And whereas victims of domestic violence are more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health concerns, including a higher risk of chronic disease, substance abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anxiety, and risky behavior. And whereas the prevention of these high numbers of domestic violence occurrences requires the collective voices and powers of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. And whereas local programs, state coalition, national organization, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence, and to eliminating it through prevention and education. And whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal agencies, healthcare providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist the victims of domestic violence and their families. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from the appropriate victims' services organizations such as Breaking Chains, Henderson County Help Center, and the Family Peace Project. And whereas, excuse me, whereas Henderson County joins others across Texas and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalition, national organization, and other agencies who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated. And whereas victims should have help to find compassion, comfort, and healing that they need, along with all the support services, so that they can safely escape the cycle of abuse, and so their abusers are punished to the full extent of the law. Now, therefore, the Commissioners Court, Henderson County, Texas, does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I forgot a very important group, the Family Peace Project.
I got them.
You got them?
I got them.
You got them. Well, the, these organizations represented here today are so important to the success of this. Court, comments?
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, yeah. Thank y'all for everything you do. Like I say, we know this is probably one of the biggest issues of, we call, I guess, of crime that happens in families and stuff. And I know we partner with y'all on a lot of stuff. The Sheriff's Department does, it's got groups that help investigators and all that kind of stuff, too. So, thank y'all for everything that y'all do.
You want to introduce anybody? Sorry.
We have Ms. Shannon Welch, who is our president, our board president. I'll get the words corrected. And then we've got Amanda, Casey, Patricia, Leslie, Abby from the Help Center. Oh, my gosh, see, this is what happens whenever I stand up here and I forget. We got Family Peace Project, Cynthia. Yes, there we go. See, you just have to go through the alphabet. So.
Sorry, I do it all the time.
But we have a good group, and we have great entities here. And, you know, we already spoke in the will. And it takes all the spokes from all the entities, from the law enforcement, DA's office, county attorney's office, that pulled together, and we make that will turn. And that's what it takes. And like I said, we have a great county.
Our two prosecuting offices wish to add anything?
We always have such a great partnership with all the agencies here. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, anything?
No, we just couldn't really do it. We're out there, letting a bad time for these families in. And they know that we have organizations like this that are strong and are known for doing, to help the families and our officers to improve these bad situations. It's just, I think that is it. Commissioner McCam is blessed.
We are.
Thank you all very much. I know we've got to get a picture, been requested to get a picture of this group, but if there's nothing further, entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'd like to make the motion to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month for Henderson County. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Passes unanimously by those present. And if y'all would, please, come forward and let's get a picture of everybody.
We may be hitting another Monday.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll have to balance out. Glad we're all family around here.
We are.
Anybody else you want to get another?
Spencer.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate you. Angie may want to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to get one with Spencer. Spencer?
Come on.
At least y'all went to do my last with the first camera.
Oh, no, he's still in.
Oh, Chuck, stop that.
Did you get it?
I did get it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on now to item four, which is consider and take action on Henderson County Appraisal District Financial Audit, ending December 31, 2024, for filing purposes only. They completed their audit by Palom Pinto and Brown, I believe, Patillo, yes. And they're submitting their financial audit for the year 2024 before us for filing purposes only. Is there any discussion? Entertain a motion?
So moved to approve for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to take action on the Henderson County Appraisal District Financial Audit, ending December 31, 2024, for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Item five, consider and take action on proposed 2026 holiday schedule for Henderson County. And, Court, we have presented here the 12 holidays that we have historically taken for several decades, presented here for us today. Is there any discussion? Well, if not, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the proposed 2026 holiday schedule for Henderson County.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, Commissioner Spivey, and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the 2026 holiday schedule for Henderson County as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Item number six is consider and take action to purchase items for the Healthy County Incentives Program. Ms. Goggins or Ms. Monk, whichever.
Sure do. I'm just telling them we've got money.
Thank you.
We have some items that we want to purchase for the Healthy County as incentives. We seem to get more participation if we hand out goodies to say, please be healthy. And what I am asking for, it's not including shipping, but you're looking at close to a little less than 2,000 to get all of these items.
And those items are what?
Um, let's see. What we picked is a cooling towel, a cooling wristband, and a sling pack. Three different items.
Court, questions?
This money is in our, does it count as a county account?
Yes.
It is not taxpayer money.
It's not taxpayer money. It's funds we receive from TAC for participating in programs like this. And the money can only be used for motivating the county employees to become healthy. We're very restricted on how it's used.
And the dollar amount being requested is $2,000?
$2,000.
Okay. Court, other questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Sound like Jeffrey.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to approve or authorize $2,000 to purchase items for the Henderson County Program Incentives. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you. Item seven, consider and take action on transfer of vehicles. A 2013 Chevrolet Tahoe, VIN number 1G, NSK2E05DR179099, to the fairgrounds, and a 2018 Ford Explorer, VIN number 1F5K8ARAJGB68923, to the district attorney's office from the sheriff's office. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Court. And we are going through our fleet and getting ready for the upcoming auction. And while we were doing that, these two vehicles came up. They're, they're still in fairly good shape, and the fairground- came up. Um, they're, they're still in fairly good shape, and the fairgrounds and the district attorney had approached us and, uh, wanted to know if we could just, uh, ask the court to transfer these two vehicles to them to get some, uh, more use out of them.
Court questions?
Say this is a good program, uh, stuff that's got use in it where we can hand it down to, uh, another department that doesn't put near as many miles on them as what the sheriff's department does and ware and fare. So, uh, you know, I've, I've had a lot of vehicles come through our shop at the precinct that we helped work on and stuff, and a lot of them are still really good vehicles. So, they still got a lot of life left. They don't
Yes, sir.
to use at these different departments. But it's better than putting them on the auction and, and we see what some will bring. They bring very little, you know. A lot of times we auction stuff off. They, they know they're county vehicles and they don't, uh, strip down Tahos and stuff. It's not for a lot of people want them, so they don't bring very much. So.
Court, further comments? Entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the transfers of the 2013 Chevrolet Tahoe and the 2018 Ford Explorer with the VIN number stated and presented on documentation.
I'll second.
To the, uh, fairgrounds and district attorney's office.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the transfer of vehicles, the 2013 Chevy Tahoe and the 2018 Ford Explorer, to the district attorney's office and the fairgrounds, uh, from the sheriff's office. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, court. Thank you, Sheriff. Item eight, consider and take action on a contract for purchase of real property described at the certain real property consisting of 3.94 acres in the AB 503, uh, Mucklauer survey TR 3B. Henderson County, Texas, located in the city of Seven Points from Prosperity Bank. Mr. County Attorney?
Good morning, court. This is the contract. I believe you've all had a copy of it. You've seen a couple of different versions on it. Uh, we've, we've spent the last month or so going back and forth with Prosperity, trying to work out a few of the details. And I think we've got a resolution that, that from the county attorney's office we're good with. Uh, this is for the Seven Points Bank Building that is, uh, they're in Seven Points. Prosperity purchased the Simmons Bank Building just, just down the street from their existing location and, uh, had approached us about, um, you know, offering their, their current building to us for purchase. As, as y'all know, we are in a former Prosperity Bank building here, so they've been good neighbors and good partners. And, um, we had looked at a lot of properties, Commissioners Spivey and Commissioner Tulley, uh, um, you know, I would, I would guess more than half a dozen different properties that we've actually physically looked at and visited. Um, we looked at some others on paper that were listings and, and we feel like for the amount of property here, the 3.9 acres, um, was, this is a good value for the county. Um, it, you know, we would eventually like to have enough room to, to build some sort of election center over there as a future product, uh, project. And, and, um, I think this would allow us the additional property to be able to do that in addition to the bank. But the, the terms of the contract are the purchase price of $775,000 payable at cash at closing, which would be on or before March 1st, 2026. Prosperity believes this would allow them time. They've not yet moved out of the building, so they're still in the process of, of, uh, getting the, the Simmons Bank Building remodeled. And, uh, they'll be moving out, you know, hopefully January, February would be their timeframe on the move. Uh, $25,000 that we would be required if the court approves this contract to put up with the title company after today. And I've visited with, with Emery. There's not an issue with that. Um, one of the other key considerations is that they're going to leave a lot of the furnishing desk and chairs and, and all of that in the building. Um, I don't know what it would cost us to furnish a building of this size, but it would be considerable. And so to me, there's some value there. But I'll entertain any questions that the court may have. Some of the changes that we made, there were actually a lot of them, which I know I'd previously emailed you, but, but, uh, we stripped down and removed a lot of the indemnity language that was in there, liability language that was in there. Uh, they had about three pages of deed restrictions that they were asking to, to put on the property. And, uh, we asked that all of those be removed. So, so, um, then all, I think we shortened their, their original version of the contract down by, by eight to 10 pages. But, but three pages were deed restrictions that they wanted to place on future use of the property. And we were able to get them to come back and agree. The only restriction that they did leave in place was the, uh, using for a future bank building, that the property, uh, can never be used as a future financial institution or bank building. Um, originally they included ATM in that, but, but, uh, you know, I did point out that while we don't have ATMs now, there are many government buildings that have ATMs in there, which just allows your constituents to pull money out while they're at the county doing county business. And so they even allowed us to have an ATM. We just can't, can't be used as a bank in the future.
Court, questions?
Well, we've been looking for a piece of property in that area for a while. And I know Commissioner Spivey and Commissioner Tulley, like he said, looked at a bunch of properties over there. This property allowed us, you know, to be able in the future to do some things that we'd like to do in that area, like the election center and everything else. I think for the value that we got this property, we, uh, they did a super job finding this. We found some that were the property was at this price, you know, raw property. So this is a ni- a nice building. It'll have to have some work done on it, but not a whole lot. I think we could probably go, uh, go straight into it with the tax office. So I think it's a, a good investment for the county and it'll, it'll get that area up there serviced like it should be.
Does everybody know this, this will be the, the future tax office and the JP Corps for precinct two, uh, over, over in that area. We'll be, they'll be moving out of the, the rental building that we rent from the city of Tulle.
Commissioner?
We just, we had a lot of time on this project and I'm really excited about the future of this building and what it holds for Henderson County. And that part of the county is growing tremendously. So it really is very needed.
Well, a couple of things that brought us to this point. We've basically outgrown the building that we're in, in, in Seven Points. We've been in that building for three decades. I mean, it's been extended period of time. The building is aging, uh, the amount of services that we're providing based upon the population growth, um, try to get your car registered or pay taxes over there, um, in the, the tax office area. Um, the one under, the one thing stated that I really need, that I really believe should be paid a lot of attention to is being able to, um, eventually build another vote center location, uh, the elections. It's getting harder and harder for us with the changing, um, requirements the state is putting on holding the elections to find partners willing for us to use these facilities. Uh, churches are, uh, one of, in particular because of the Sunday voting nowadays. And it's becoming to a point to where the county owning these facilities, um, becomes more of a positive to us. And Commissioners, you said, as, as everyone said, the, the purchase price for this is of extremely good value for us for what we are doing. So, uh, thank y'all for your hard work because the, the Commissioners over here, I know y'all went out and even toured the building and had a good report on it. West End County Attorney's Office wrestling with the, uh, with Prosperity. They've been great to work with, is my understanding, correct?
They have been great to work with, yes.
Okay.
And I know, I think this is a 6,000 square foot building, 6,000. We just built a 3,000 square foot building with the ARPA funds that cost 1.2 million. For building, so.
Exactly. Was there anything further on this? We do have the earnest money available that we can do, and we did make preparations for the final payment in the 2026 budget. Okay.
It's got, uh, it's easy access. I mean, it's off of the main highway, but it's, it's fairly easy access where it's located and has substantial parking. So I think it'll be a great location.
I think it's within an acre or a mile probably from the, the old tax office.
And at, at one time, as my understanding, we voted next door in the church. I forget the name or denomination of the church next door, but it's right next door adjacent to it. But that was one of the churches that recently, um, dropped us and, and, uh, would not allow us to continue holding elections there. We looked at some other areas. We looked at some properties over in Gun Barrel. We looked at some properties a little further north in Maybank, but I think it was the, uh, the, uh, the, the will of the court that we really wanted to be as far west as we could go and really wanted to be in that Seven Points area, uh, to try to, to keep that presence over on that far west end of the county. Plus, property got a lot more expensive as it got into Gun Barrel. We looked at some that were, were cost prohibitive. Again, you would have, to, to get into Gun Barrel on the main street, you would have spent more than this for a vacant lot that, then you'd have that price of cost of building something new.
Court, anything further? Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, uh, to approve the contract for purchase of real property described at a certain real property consisting of 3.94 acres, uh, for Henderson County, Texas, located in the city of Seven Points from Prosperity Bank.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tulley and, uh, sorry, Commissioner Spivey and, um, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the contract for purpose of real property described at the certain real property consisting of 3.94 acres in the AB 503, um, Muckleroy survey TR 3B, Henderson County, Texas, located in the city of Seven Points from Prosperity Bank. And with, uh, permission to, to add to that for 775,000?
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have an issue with adding that? With the, um, purchase price of 775,000? Authorization for the judge to sign? Is that included?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously? Thank you, court, and thank you, uh, Rich County Attorney. Uh, item nine, consider and take action to approve a change order with Dupa Chain Contractors LLC in the amount of $100,000 for ARPA water system generator price increases. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, court. And this is the change order due to the tariffs on the generators for the water project. We are increasing the contract by 100,000 to cover the cost of the tariffs.
This morning, we have Mr. Danny Hayes with us with, uh, not Dupa Chain, I'm sorry, KSA.
Just to add to this, uh, this is being set up as an allowance in the, in the contract. So once it, whatever tariff impact at the end of the day is when it hits US shores or with whatever you're able to, to run on that trap you're chasing, um, you know, we'll, we'll make adjustments with documented, uh, pricing on what that tariff actually was, and we'll amend that allowance up or down. Uh, and that's, that's written into, it's going to be one of the attachments. It's going to be a, there's a specification section behind that that is an allowance. And then the, the last page of that is what describes those various terms. Uh, and this, this $100,000 amount, again, based on what we've been provided thus far, plus a 3% bonding cost, which I did confirm, that is only on the allowance amount. Um, the, we've rounded this up to the next whole $1,000 to get to the 100,000. So just gotta keep the math easy.
Questions, court?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First change order, you know, we reduced the price by, uh, 354,800. That was for the, uh, uh, AMWAC generator that they got a different grant on. Uh, this question's, I think, the audit. Uh, and, uh, where did we move that fund to when we, when we done that? Was that for, uh, inmate medical? Or I know we used part of it for their match grant in, out of that. But I was wondering where we moved, what, what ARPA fund did we move that into?
That, um, 354,800 reduction. If you remember, at the end of last year, we ended up buying, um, stuff for the sheriff's department, I believe the body cams and all of that. So the, this fund moved to that area and the cows.
Okay.
And cows as well.
I just didn't remember where we went, but I knew that we had that reduction in there and stuff. So we did, we did have to use it and other stuff that we did.
We were under the deadline of the, um, December 31st of 2025 to get the money positioned so that we could expend it. And, um, that's what we chose at that time to do so we didn't have to send it back. I do have a, just a real quick question, more or less just for my ears. Um, this does not change the, um, the contract times at all?
No, sir.
Okay. So we're still under that?
Yes, sir.
Because with this, the end of December of '26, we have to have the funds expended. So I just wanted to be sure.
There's no, there's no current contract change.
Okay.
Not even, nothing's even been requested.
Okay. Court, further questions? Entertain a motion with the judge's authorization to sign.
So moved to approve with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve a change order with Dupa Chain Contractors LLC in the amount of $100,000 for ARPA water system generator price increases with the county judge's authorization to sign. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 10, consider and take action on a resolution requesting waiver of matching funds in participation with the federal off-system bridge program administered by the Texas Department of Transportation related to County Road 3806. Commissioner?
Uh, yes, this is a resolution, uh, from TexDOT with Henderson County and Precinct Three for the federal off-road bridge program, uh, administered by TexDOT to replace or rehabilitate structurally deficient, functionally obsolete bridges located on public roads and streets. Uh, this bridge is on 30, is it 3806, uh, County Road 3806 at Kickapoo. 3806 is a county road, uh, just north of, uh, Markerson. And, uh, this allows me to, uh, offset that price with, uh, other work that I do, uh, on bridge maintenance or, or, uh, just water movement. And I'm going to, uh, offset that by redoing the bridge, uh, on County Road 3800 at Potawatomi Creek. Uh, it's a federal grant from TexDOT and then TexDOT pays 10, the federal government pays 80 and then TexDOT 10 and the county 10. But I can offset that 10% by redoing this bridge at Potawatomi. My 10% of it would be about 120,000 dollars. And that's about what, uh, what it would cost me to rehab the bridge at Potawatomi. So, uh, that's what I'm bringing the resolution to the county for.
Court, questions? How many bridges you got left?
Uh, I'll, I'll have, uh, five wooden bridges left.
Out of the 22? Out of 22 bridges. Court, any other questions or discussion? Entertain a motion?
I move that we, uh, approve the resolution requesting waiver of local match funds in participation with the federal off-road bridge system program administered by Texas Department of Public Transportation, uh, related to County Road 3806.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the resolution requesting waiver of local match funds in participation with the federal off-system bridge program administered by the Texas Department of Transportation related to, uh, County Road 3806 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you. Item 11, consider and take action on a request for subdivision discretionary exemption, Appendix U, from MP Custom Contracting Incorporated, Mark Phillips, for property on County Road 3700 located in Precinct Three. Commissioner?
Uh, yes, this is a request from MP Custom Contracting. Yes, this is a request from MP Custom Contracting, Mark and Stacy Phillips, splitting a 15-acre track into a 5-acre and a 10-acre track. They have no plans to further develop the property. As you can see, one portion of it, the 10-acre, is in, a good bit of it is a floodplain and won't be split any further. And then the other 5-acre track has a pond in it, so it won't be split any further. They have the survey available, and all fees been paid.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move, I'll make the motion that we approve Appendix U for MP Custom Contracting Incorporated.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the request for subdivision discretionary exemption, Appendix U, from MP Custom Contracting Incorporated, Mark Phillips, for property on County Road 3700 located in Precinct Three. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present. Item 13 is receive financial reports. And we have the combined JP County and District Courts reports, financial reports, which will be available to the public after meeting. Item 13, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet, which we have none. And then item 14 is consider and take action on submitted contracts, which we do have one that was kind of a little late smitten. But, Mr. Bynum?
Yes, Court. Sorry, we got this to y'all a little late, but I've got to actually get this back into tack, so this is going to require the judge's signature on it. What I have here is our arts program. This is through TAC with our health employee benefits program. This is, what this is, is this is about our 1095Cs. We used to produce those. TAC would actually get those back to us, and we would get those out to the employees. We have a couple, or three options here that we can do. Some of this has changed. The first option is we do not wish to have TAC print the 1095C forms. The other one is we can request them to print them and mail them directly here to us here at the county. Or we can have them print them and actually mail them directly to the employee. So what I see us doing, because there's going to be a cost of $3 per form if they were to mail those forms for each employee that participates in our health benefit program. When I say that, it's our health insurance and our dental plan is also included in this as well, I think. So they would mail those forms to us. That would cost us $3 a form. So I recommend that we don't do that. The other is it would cost us $3 plus $1.50 if they mail it directly to the employee. The reason why I say I don't choose either of those, one reason is for the cost. The other thing is if we decide to not allow them to print those, these are, actually, we report this reporting for our 1095Cs on a quarterly basis. And so this information is sitting in what they call a simplicity file that we have access to. And so if the employee needs their 1095C, they can request that through my office, and we can access it and print that for them at that point. So therefore, there'd basically be no cost. It'd just be five minutes of our time to be able to do so. So that's what I highly recommend that we do. One of the things that we have to do is I actually have to talk with IT, and I have talked with Amy Ray about this yesterday. Can talk to IT to let them know that they need to be able to contact my office, the Treasurer's office, so that we can actually get this to the employee if they request that. So that's one of the things that would be required to do. But I also could send out a massive email to maybe just impart a head so that they can tell their employees when this is going to be available for the 2025 year. That's what I recommend is that we do not have them print the 1095C forms.
Court, questions?
I know now, on our STW program, you can go into the deal on there, and you can pull your W-2 up from the year. And I didn't know if that something be added to it, which I know we're going to a new system, but.
Dad, I couldn't answer because we are got a new system.
New system.
I'm sure how that's going to just work just yet, but yes. Anything that we can actually scan, put into STW, we would be able to do so and make a part, you know, along with that. But I'm uncertain about the new system just yet. That might be something that we could talk and request. I'm not real sure.
Is this a form that has to be turned in with taxes?
So this is just a form that does the reporting. I'm not sure I'm going to say this right, but it's the low cost of our health insurance benefit that is sitting out there reporting. I actually would say that employees should, if they get that, they should look at it to make sure it's correct. Another judge, if he don't mind me saying, he had an issue with his last year. We got that fixed. So some don't need it, but it's there if they do. So.
This was originally required with the Affordable Health Care Act. And then, over time, it has changed where it is not a required supplemental for an But there are instances where it could be required.
Correct.
So at this point in time, if anyone needs it, we can request the Treasurer's office and save the, save the preparation costs in the mailing.
Yeah, that saves us the $3 or the $4.50 altogether. Now, TAC automatically does. They report all this information to the IRS for us, so we don't have to work with doing that. So I recommend that we continue to do this, but I just don't think that it's necessary for them to print the forms. Again, not everybody uses those. Some may, but it's available to them if they do.
So we'll just, TAC has seen it electronically to us, and you know the electronic.
That's correct. We put the information quarterly into a file for them to do that and send that to them, so we'll be able to access that.
Court, further discussion or questions?
So you're recommended that we check the first box.
That'd be correct, yes, sir.
I make the motion that we do not wish to have the 1095C form printed for calendar year 2025 with the judge's signature to authorize.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve, excuse me, the contract with Texas Association of County's Health and Employee Benefits Pool with the Markham Do Not Wish to Have the 1095C forms printed with the county judge's authorization signed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you, Court.
Item 15, consider and take action on right-of-way permits.
Where, Precinct Two?
Yes, Court, this is Precinct Two in Commissioner Thule's precinct. It's got a right-of-way permit for Bright Speed, and I guess this is probably part of the ARPA, ARPA part of the Bright Speed installation. And it's mostly in a subdivision. Is that, you know what subdivision that is there? That Hidden Hills?
I believe it is.
Hidden Hills Harbor?
Yes.
And they're looking to do some underground boring and installation of fiber optics for internet service. And the roads are north of Joyce Circle, a total of 1,622 foot, south of Hidden Hills Drive, 2,813 foot, east of Lakeview Drive, 304 foot, east of Deer Run Lane, 1,980 foot, north of Leon Creek Drive, 2,280 feet, east of Leon Creek Drive, 624 feet, south of Eastern Hills Drive, 624 feet, east of Channel View, 2,080 foot, west of Oak Hill Drive, 732 foot, south of Oak Hill Drive, 2,399 foot, south of Rolling Hills Drive, 1,254 foot, west of Tanglewood Drive, 418 foot, east of Tanglewood Drive, 373 foot, east of High Point Drive, 578 foot, west of High Point Drive, 714 foot, east of Kingswood Drive, 999 foot, east of Beautiful Hills, 774 foot, west of Deer Cove Drive, 494 foot.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Bright Speed for a utility line activity in the aforementioned roads with the Commissioner's authorization signed.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the right-of-way agreement with Bright Speed for installation of fiber optics along the aforementioned roads with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present. Item 16, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Vaughn?
I do have those today with the Court's approval. And this is just to recognize that this lady's income in the last few days, the Commissioners that we see mostly to take care of Commissioner McCam and the large单位 we speak last week.
Court, questions? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the presented budget amendments. Are there any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present. Item 17, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $765,374.98.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I did, but you answered it this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner McCam?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 bills in the amount of $765,374.98 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $765,374.98 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this replat is in Beechwood Estates in Precinct One, and it is taking two lots and combining them and making one lot. And I believe they are building the houses, the reason for this replat. Their lots are really small, but it's making it a little bigger.
A little bit. Court, questions? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to replat lots 18 and 19, creating lots 18-R located in Beechwood Estates for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the replat in Beechwood Estates, Section 8, combining lots 18 and 19, creating a lot 18-R for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19 is open to consider bids. No bids today. Item 20, consider and take action to adjourn.
I make the motion that we adjourn. I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to adjourn at 10:03. All those in favor of the motion. Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you for being with us today.